All right, it is six o'clock. So, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board. Today is Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, please. Oh, we have, um, Joe Donardo is not with us this evening, but we do have Kurt Hathaway, Mary Ashcroft, Matt Eddy, and Sharon Russell. And I just remembered that I was supposed to start at that end. This meeting, but next time.
Doesn't hurt my feelings.
Okay, um, please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't sit down.
And if you would remain standing, please. Um. Just a moment of silence, please, for two folks who were, uh, we lost this past week. One is former Select Board Member Chris Kiefer Chaffey, um, who was a great addition to the board for the time she was on it. Um, and did a lot of work. Many of us knew her as a police officer and then as a, uh, uh, federal officer in the courts. And also, the Dawn Carlson, wife of Assistant Chief Mike Carlson, died also this week. He was in earlier for a meeting. Um, Dawn was in education locally and a very solid member of our community. We will miss both of these women. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right. Um, first item on the agenda is the approval of the Select Board Minutes for May sixth. That was our regular meeting.
Move to accept.
Motion's been made to accept.
Second.
And seconded, any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Um, you have all seen the orders for payment of our town's bills. And you've all signed. So, uh, do we have a motion to approve the orders?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the orders. Um, any reservations or withholding of, on any items? I think we all, we were all okay. All in favor of accepting the orders and approving them, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Are there any board member announcements? No? Okay. Um, update from the Select Board Chair. Uh, just want to thank any and all who were involved in our open house at the new McKinley Avenue Fire Station, Fire and Police Station. And thank you especially to the, um, folks who were so kind as to, you know, help get it ready, the departments, all of the work they put in. Um, so thank you all very much. It was a, um, wonderful success. I heard nothing but good comments. So, thank you all. Right, um, this is the point at which we take comments from the floor, uh, for anyone who is not otherwise on the agenda. So, and, oh, lots of hands going up today. Okay, well, we'll start this way. David?
Yes, um. Okay, two items. Uh, one, East Pittsburgh Road, any chance of it getting repaved this, uh, season here?
No Commissioners here?
Hmm?
Kurt?
Yeah, it's on the list.
Is it on the list? Okay, where is the asphalt gonna come from? Is it gonna come from Canada?
The li- the liquid asphalt, I believe, comes out of Canada.
That upset your budget. Like, don't you know?
Our price is locked.
We put it out to bid, we're locked in.
You are locked in, so we'll have.
There'll be an asphalt adjustment.
Okay, so.
An asphalt, asphalt price adjustment.
Yeah, there's a liquid adjustment in there, but.
Yeah, yeah, so it is gonna be done.
Yeah.
You have any idea when?
No.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's for, uh, fiscal twenty-six, so only till after July one.
Okay, okay, so, yeah, no use the other road. Um, the, the other thing, East Woods, uh, Northwood Park. Um, and dogs. Is there any chance of getting a place where people, uh, can let their dogs run off leash? I see more people walking dogs.
Very often, because they're all out.
We, we don't want them to be.
I'm not gonna make a comment and discriminate myself.
Okay.
Now, I have been told to put it on leash, and I did. If I see other people or cars, why not put them on the leash?
Yeah, um, David, long-term plan? Um, right now, where you see the swimming pool, we know that the pool will need to be replaced in the coming probably five years or so. Um, and that area is, will be, the pool will go on another location, um, hopefully up at Northwood. And the area presently is enclosed, and long-range plan is possibly to turn that into a dog park. So, but that's, you know, longer range planning.
I could, now I can have something to tell people with their dogs.
Wait a while.
Take your dog to the swimming pool.
Not exactly, but, um, but that's the plan long-term. Yeah, but yes, you're correct. Dogs need to be on leashes up there.
Um. And as one other item, um, Killington just went to a five-board Select Board. And one that was debated, people asked me. And I commented about how well your five-board, five-member board runs.
Thank you.
Influences anybody, but.
Well, thanks.
You are an example.
Good, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sometimes I wonder if we're really fishing or not, but.
I think we do, okay.
We get some stuff done, I guess, sometimes.
Especially if somebody's not here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were debating about who that would be. But let's not go there.
We, Killington ran into a question, problem, uh, with liquor license. Because two of the Select Board were, had conflicts.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So, when you have a conflict, the five people are very useful.
Yeah, yeah, it's good to have a quorum there, like.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, all done?
Yep.
All right, next, comments, public comments. Dawn?
Oh. That's lunch. Ugh! He beat me to the punch. I came for a couple of reasons, uh. I came to thank the Board in two respects. Um, because I was reflecting on, on the Public Safety Building, and then it was fantastic. I wish it could have stayed longer, but with the kind of weather that we've had here this spring, I I had numerous projects at home that I just had to attend to. But I wanted to thank the Board. I wanted to thank this Board for having given me the opportunity in a past life, uh, to chair the Board when it wasn't all that certain that we could get the building. And by educating the public, as we did, we got a positive vote. Uh, but I wanna thank this Board for carrying that forward in some pretty challenging times, um, with COVID and the, uh, accompanying problems that COVID brought, and inflation, and rising costs, and bond issues that had to be amended and so forth. This Board, uh, really stood fast and worked hard and, uh, scurried around and found the means to, to be able to complete the project. All right, that, that goes for the project. Uh, but I wanna go back some fifty years, pretty much. Way back to uh, my first encounters with the town and, and the politics of the town in recreation. And probably, other than the school having been built, the new school, uh, the biggest single project that the town faced at the time was Northwood Park. And even though we got substantial federal and state help with that, it was a, a pretty sizable bond at the time for the town. You know, when I look back, it speaks so well of this town that and it speaks well for the leadership in this town, that the people at that time approved that project and subsequent funding for that project. And from that point forward in, in the seventies to now, fifty years later, there has never been a recreation proposal that has been denied in this town. The, so the people have supported that kind of infrastructure. Then we come to the fire, the Fire Department and the buildings, the, uh, what do I wanna say? Uh, well, naturally deteriorating buildings that had to be replaced. Um, and again, through education of the public, those bonds were approved and the town has never defeated a bond for our Fire Department or our Police Department, or a budget for either one of those. Now, not only does that speak well for our townspeople, but it speaks well that the town recognizes that it has great leadership in this town, including this Board, uh, and I wanna give you the credit for that. Interesting, you beat me to the punch, because you're right. We don't always get things right. Uh, we don't, we don't always agree. But this Board and the previous Board and the Boards that I served on, um, showed the leadership that this town always responded to. And when you look at the demographics of the region, and you see, for instance, if you know, like I know, from a close acquaintance in the Lister's Office, there aren't any homes available in Rutland Town. There are, there are very few, if any, homes for sale in Rutland Town. The reason being that they go in a heartbeat. And they go because people wanna be here. And why they wanna be here? Because you have the shining examples such as that Public Safety Building, which show not only that we can build a six million dollar building when it only wasn't supposed to cost three in an inflationary cycle. That's only money. But it shows that the people appreciate those that serve them in those buildings. And that the town leadership appreciates those that protect our people and serve our people and give them a building that they rightly deserve. Um, it's a matter of great pride that this community cares not, not just about how it looks, but how it treats its employees and how it treats its public servants that are there to serve that public. And I wanna thank you guys for what you did. It was a beautiful, it's a beautiful building. And, and it spares no expense, and rightly so, when it comes to what those folks do. And I've always valued my service in the Fire Department. I, I wish I could have continued, but I, I just, I couldn't. There are too many requirements, and those people that are there, uh, really deserve our, our thanks and our support. And I'd also like to thank you, Mary, for your kind remarks. I, I heard it secondhand.
Yeah, you should have stayed.
No, but that's, that's.
I said good things about you, Dawn.
You guys, you guys deserve the credit because you carried that thing through. And, uh, it wasn't easy, and, you know, and I've heard the criticism around town about the money, and I said, well, how, how did that negatively affect your taxes? You see them going up like by hundreds and hundreds of dollars? No, you don't. Because this town is solid. And, and you'll hear later on how much more solid it is in, in another report, but thank you and, and thanks for bearing with me, and I appreciate your comments about, about our Board too. They're true.
Hey, thanks.
Thank you, Dawn. All right, yes, sir? Come on up.
I'm not reading all of this, this is just for me to refer to.
Yeah, we wouldn't let you read it all.
Reading Honorable Members of the Select Board Public, uh, my name is Peter G. Franzoni, I'm a Rutland City citizen. And as I'm not one of your constituents, I humbly thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you. Uh, though I'm not a citizen of Rutland Town, um, my father was a Lance surveyor for forty-four years. I surveyed under him for twenty-six, and on my own for another seventeen, various other companies. That vault was filled with dozens upon dozens of our survey plats, a few hundred, maybe even a few thousand pages of our record descriptions and reports. I've had family that lives in this town. I've been in and out of this town my whole life. This town is part of my home, it's part of my community. Uh, I'm here to talk about the Resolution Against Condemning a Tax of Due Process and Affirming Our Constitutional Rights that was recently passed in Rutland City. And I submitted it to the Board, humbly hoping that you would pass the same resolution here. Uh, so far now, there's ten municipalities that have passed it in the original language, um, including Brandon and Wallingford. I expect to be speaking at Proctor next week, Middletown Springs tomorrow night, and, uh, Thursday, I forget where I'm going, West Rutland, uh. Um, I'm a US Army veteran. Uh, I'm not a combat veteran, and it's important you know that about me. I don't carry the honor of that distinction. More horribly, importantly, that I don't carry that horrible weight that that distinction bestows. Uh, known a lot of combat veterans, most of the people that trained me were combat veterans. Um, and by far, I've come to know more of them as a veteran myself. Been of service to them and of friendship to them since. Probably the highest honor I hold myself is the respect and trust I've built with these soldiers. Um, particularly the times that I've built enough respect and trust with those that do hor- hold that horrible distinction, or they've shared some experiences as such with me. Sometimes things they don't even discuss with their own family members. It's a, uh, it's a level of confidence that I don't have the words to describe. It's humbling. Aside from a few things that are probably too personal to discuss here, it's, it's what is most sacred to me. You'd have to torture me, probably even kill me to drag the contents of those conversations out of me. But there are some things I can talk about that they would want me to talk about, and I am honor-bound to talk about, and even oath for sworn to talk about. The first would be our, our oath of enlistment. Our oath of enlistment, the first part of our oath of enlistment is to support and defend the Constitution. Following to follow the orders of our President, the United States. And thereafter, the orders of the officers appointed above us according to the rules and regulations of military, Uniform Code of Military Justice. There's a reason that support and defend Constitution is first. Primacy is obvious. It's our most supreme order, above any orders that we can be given by the President or any of the officers above us. More than the safety of our President, more than the safety of the officers above us, the public at large, our communities, our loved ones, or even our fellow soldiers. Our first command is to support and defend that Constitution. The reason for that primacy is obvious. And without the Constitution, there is no United States. The United States does not exist without the Constitution. The Constitution isn't just the law, it's the basis of law. All of our federal, local, state laws are based upon the Constitution. There are no laws of the land that have supremacy over our Constitution. You chip away a one piece of it, it crumbles. As powerful as the Constitution is and the rights that are enshrined within it, without those that are willing to support and defend it, it is powerless. Our President, my Commander in Chief, has made many statements over these last one hundred-plus days that challenge the integrity of our Constitution. It is not within his purveyance or authority. Interpretation of the Constitution is the sole responsibility of the judiciary and the judiciary alone. I've been asked why I've been bringing this to local levels, and that it's not the authority of the local sandbox. It shouldn't be brought to the towns. This is something that should only be handled at a federal and state level. You know, being a soldier, I followed my chain of command. My President made those statements, he violated his own oath, that he has now taken twice to protect, preserve, and support our Constitution. I tried to convey my concerns to him, and he did not hear me. I conveyed my concerns to our Senators and Representatives of the federal government. They in turn conveyed the concerns to the President, he did not hear them. I conveyed my concerns to my Governor and my state representatives, and also was not heard. But I went to my local alderman, and I finally was heard. What I'm doing is very similar to what the public laws did before the Civil War. Uh, before the Civil War broke out, the southern states were deputizing posses basically as marshals and sending them into the northern states to recapture escaped slaves and just black people in general. The northern states petitioned our federal government to make them stop, and they were unheard. So they started passing laws in their local communities. Vermont was one of the first, town by town, city by city. And they went and they passed the public laws to prevent these things from happening. This is basically what I'm attempting to do here. I've been accused of acting in perfidy, and that I am, I'm acting with partisanship. Um, to that I'll answer, we're being played. Anybody that wants to come to me and say that immigration is, is running rampant, and we have basically an open border policy all over this coun- country, you'll get no argument from me. I a hundred percent agree. Immigration is out of control right now. It's terrifying. It's absolutely terrifying. Let alone for gang members and immigrant, immigrants, but what about foreign agents? People that are coming here with a willing idea to, to hurt our country. I'm also old enough to remember when immigration wasn't a problem or a concern. When it was huge and bureaucratic and boring, but it was safe and effective for everyone involved, American citizens and immigrants alike. And decade after decade, I've watched support and funding get chipped away, and get it, it gets attacked by every side. I've had many liberal-minded folks come to me and say, oh, it's only the Republicans that have been chipping away. That's just not true. The Clinton administration was one of the largest decimations to our immigration policies, uh. Millions of dollars cut from funding during that administration, and, and although he's not doing the same as right now, or he's trying to alleviate due process and habeas corpus, it more or less amounted to the same thing. They were rubber stamping two, three hundred immigrants at a time through the court system. Biden did the same thing. I'm disgusted by all of it. But I'm not here to argue that. Right now, we're being petitioned by our federal government to say, we need to pause constitutional rights to fix this problem. I'm sorry, excuse my vulgarity, but you will not piss on my Congress Constitution and tell me it's raining. You will find another way to fix these problems. We've done it before, we can do it again. Right now, the federal government is holding to the fact that anyone that they deem illegal should not be allowed due process. By that reasoning, that means any law enforcement official could come up and slap a pair of cuffs on me, say, you're an illegal immigrant, detain me and arrest me, without reading me my Miranda rights, without letting me call a lawyer. You can't even call home to say, honey, bring me my birth certificate to prove that I'm here. Furthermore, they're rendering people from the jurisdiction of the United States. For all of you that may need a basic civics course done again, if you're moved from the jurisdiction of the United States, the Constitution cannot protect you. Soon as you're outside the jurisdiction of the United States, there's nothing we can do for you. There's a term for that. It's not deported, it's called rendered. You've been rendered from the jurisdiction of the United States. And when you're taken out of the jurisdiction of the United States without due process, that's exactly what happens to you. You're rendered from our protection.
Mr. Franzoni?
My time's up.
Kind of.
It's okay.
But let me, it's, let me first thank you for your research. It's obviously, um, important to you, and, and you've done a lot. Um, secondly, we did receive, uh, what you sent us, which is a copy of the Rutland City Resolution. Um, we need to put it into our own, you know, language.
Yes.
Right, um, which we haven't done yet. You may have heard, we had a few other projects going on here over, over the weekend.
Quite busy, yes.
Um, however, at least two people sitting on this Board have taken oaths to uphold the Constitution of the State of Vermont and the US Constitution. And I just took it again a couple of weeks ago. Um, so we're very well aware of, um, of which you speak. And there's another person in the room as well, who has taken an oath as an attorney, so. Um, three, two other people. So there's four people in the room who have taken the attorney's oath to uphold the Constitution. Um, we're not going to vote on anything tonight, A, because we don't have the template in front of us that we need to put in um, our own language referring to Rutland Town. And secondly, we're missing a member, and it's our usual practice when we do something like this. Um, we make sure there's a full Board to consider it.
Sure, sure.
So, thank you for your comments, we appreciate. Thank you for, um, circulating this among the towns and for the work you're doing on it. Um, I for one think it's, it's important.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, who else might wish to talk to the Select Board? Mr. Greg?
Okay, just giving everyone else a chance. Figured when it was my time, you.
Okay, we have, we have received, um, you, you told us it was coming. We have received the Act Two-Fifty amended application for a demolition permit along the lines of what you have. It's extensive. I had Bill run off a hard copy so that, um, we could take a look at it. We're not gonna take action tonight because frankly, we got it in the middle of last week, and I haven't read it. I was kinda doing other things. Um, but, um, we do have our municipal reaction questionnaires ready to go, and I, we met with the Fire Committee, and I asked to make sure that they had reviewed it and they could fill out their portion, and all the police departments here, the highway departments here. Um, please do take the time to go over the Act Two-Fifty application for the demolition of a portion of the mall buildings and the reclamation of the green area, so. And let me know if there are any, or let us know if there are any impacts that you see on your departments. It's gonna take a while to do, so put some time aside to do that. So that's my summary. Um, Mr. Greg?
Well, uh, I, I guess I, I was a little taken aback when you said the extensive application, because if, if the demolition is extensive, I'm gonna be really worried when we bring in the Walmart application. Um, I actually thought it was an application that had a, has what it needs from the Department of Environmental Conservation, but it is just for the demolition. Um, we were here on April twenty-second. Uh, we said we'd file within thirty, we filed within thirty. Um, what we told you on April twenty-second is what we filed for. Um, fundamentally, it's an application which reduces the amount of impervious surface to come into compliance with what's called the three-acre stormwater rule. And that's a rule, um, which requires, um, uh, holders of property with a certain amount of impervious surface under the three-acre rules and definitions to, um, obtain stormwater coverage. And so it's for the benefit of the discharge to the Otter Creek. And as, um, Craig Jewitt from MSK Engineering explained on April twenty-second, um, what we're doing with this application and how we're achieving compliance, um, is regardless of um, the Walmart application, which, um, certainly we hope will be filed sometime in the fall, but it's all subject to a number of variables. So, um, I'm just here to give you that update, see if there are any questions. We, um, are available to any of the department heads who, if they have any questions, or the town administrator, and I see your next meeting is June third. And, um, to the extent that you have questions of us or want us to answer anything, that's what we wanna do, because the town of Rutland is the most important party in this proceeding and will come in the future. Your role as the statutory party is vital. And the progress that's made through the Act Two-Fifty process really depends upon, in part, the Select Board. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, which is kind of why I wanna read what you submitted.
We understand, we certainly want you to read it.
Yep.
Um, there is a demolition plan, it's been approved by the Department of Environmental Conservation. There is a waste reduction law and protocol which is complied with. There's the, um, stormwater discharge permits, the construction general permits. And we paid our eleven thousand eight hundred dollar fee. So if you wonder what it costs to demolish a building for the Act Two-Fifty program, it costs you eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. wonder what it costs to demolish a building for the Act Two Fifty program, it costs you eleven thousand eight hundred dollars.
Yep. Um, well, yeah, go ahead.
That's the, what are the timing? What's the timing for next steps here? Is it just their department has need to complete the forms you referenced or?
There's the municipal impact questionnaire, which I've asked and continue to ask department heads, do take a look at the application, see if your department is impacted. And if the impact is a positive one, or if, if you have some questions, reach out, um, Attorney Greg is willing to answer them, but we want to be sure.
I mean, the obvious one is that we know what issues the mall has had.
Yes.
Demand on your municipal services. We're trying to demolish the mall.
Well, not all, because you're leaving up the Kmart.
Kmart box, but by and large.
Yeah.
There's a, going to be a substantial, um, reduction. And, um, so it would seem that that would bode well for, um, future management of the property.
Yes. Thank you. And thanks for coming in. Um, timeline is, we can probably, if people think they're going to have a time, a chance to review this and department heads by our meeting two weeks from now, we can put it on the agenda to vote on then.
If you put it on the agenda, I will be here.
I suspect you might be.
So we can all get that by email?
Um, Bill can.
It's been.
It's, yes. Bill will send around the packet by email. I've got the one hard copy he's made. If you want a hard copy, um, I'll leave this behind and Bill can make a couple.
Just so you know, because you are always a statutory party and I encourage you to learn this, there's what's called the Act Two Fifty database. You can access everything that Mary has printed off, everything that you're going to get in the mail. You can access all Act Two Fifty applications and most permits. Um, they're slowly being added to the Act Two Fifty database. You go onto that Act Two Fifty database. You can search with a search tool and everything that you're going to get sent as an email has already been loaded up on, onto that site. It's a really good resource. There's also the Agency of Natural Resources and, and, um, any questions you have about this property, its permitting history, the Department of Environmental Conservation permits that have been issued. They're all up on the A and R, um, database as well as the Act Fifty database. It's a really good resource.
It is. It is. People have asked about the mall and are they, is it really going to happen this time? And my response has been they've put together the right team to do it this time. And you, the engineer, um, and the fact that we actually saw not only the applicant, but the co-applicant with the Walmart folks in for the, the construction portion, um, they, it all tells me it's going forward. So.
It, the demo, the demolition has to go forward.
Yep.
And it's regardless of the future. And that's really important. That's a message we've tried to communicate. And again, all I can continue to say is, um, the town has a unique role. You really do. And, and, um, when you hear that phrase statutory party, you're the statutory party that we want to, um, provide all the information and be responsive to your concerns.
Um, have you also talked with our planning commission?
Go on there next.
Great. Okay. All right. Any questions at this point for Mr. Greg? Okay.
Well, as entertaining and informative as it has been, I'm going to take my leave and I will check on the agenda. And if there are any questions, be more than happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, David. All right. Anyone else either on?
Excuse me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Either in, oh, I'm sure it was something we said.
Thank you again.
So things are gonna say that they're gonna get to mess.
And there's no one on the Zoom call. So we'll move into our agenda for the evening. Micro Town Rec Director is not.
But I have some.
Yes, an update. Sharon?
Yes. Well, let me put my glasses on so I can see. Dewey Field, all of the telephone poles are gone. I had to go over and check for Mike. Um, Mike had to be in Manchester tonight. I think he may be coaching a team down there for one of the coaches. The pool is ready to be filled. It'll be, um, filled before Friday and turned on Friday. Alan Sand filters, um, come back today. They're all set to go. Oh, our, our issue with lifeguards and training has been taken care of.
For this year?
Yes.
Good.
Yeah. Um, I don't exactly know. I know they hired somebody to do it.
Good.
And it was somebody local that had kept their certification up. So they were willing and and met the need, the need that we had. So that was taken care of. Um, yeah, the sand filters came in today. And he started to fill it. So he's proposing that Friday, the pool will be turned on. And that's about all he had to say.
Okay. Thank you. Those were the big light poles and they're all down.
They're all down.
Safe now. So thank you very much.
The only thing that was left is two stumps and those were the last two holes taken down. So I'm assuming they're going to go over and grind them down.
I think they'll pull them out.
Is that, yeah, you said that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they'll be over to pull them out.
So.
Alrighty. Very good. Next up, thank you, Sharon. Next up, Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I don't really have a whole lot tonight. Short, sweet and to the point. Um, we spent most of the last couple of weeks working on the shared use path.
Thank you.
So we have probably ninety-five percent of it right now roughed in with base gravel. Uh, we got a little small portion of a fill that we did last year, basically from, uh, if you wanted to, you could actually access the entire route from the park to Chestsiana Drive. Now, we still got to put the top stuff on it and dress it all up and make it all pretty, but the path is there. And actually, we were filling it and some people came walking down and they were coming up with a loader and they're like, oh, we'll just go this way. In a way they went and I'm like, inaugural walk has happened. Um, today we, uh, for today and tomorrow, we have A1 rented. Uh, and we're cleaning catch basins. We started up on, uh, the wind mirror, uh, up on Panic, uh, cleaning those today. Those haven't been cleaned probably since they were put in. So that was a, most of the day spent there, but, uh, beyond doing post road and trying to get some of the, the, uh, MS four stuff cleaned up before they do our inspections on that. And then my other thing was the Dewey Field thing. Um, so if anybody's looking for a telephone pole chunks, we have a plethora.
How big are the chunks?
Uh, depends. There's some smaller pieces. There's some, those big ones, the, the stumps you were talking about, those are probably eighteen inches, two feet across. Those are big. They don't grow trees that big anymore for telephone poles. Those are giant. And those are ten to twelve foot. They cut them. Then there's some other ones that are just regular poles. You know, they're probably ten, twelve inches across. And there's a couple of them that are twenty plus feet long. So if anybody's looking to build a pole barn, please.
What, uh, so are they at Dewey now or are they?
They're Dewey, it's, we, it's basically cleaned up. They're all up by the, uh, the poles are up to the left of the brush pile.
Okay.
At the transfer station.
Right.
And then we, we basically broke everything down into a light component. So like all of the, the light fixtures themselves are all aluminum, the housings, the brackets, everything that all went in a truck and went to Hubbard's and we got a, a truckload of aluminum. It was worth thirty-four dollars.
Oh.
Maybe paid for the fuel to do that.
Yeah.
Then we took, uh, a bunch of, they had some, a lot of, uh, three inch galvanized conduit. We took that up and that was like forty two or forty-five or something like that. So, um, we scrapped what we could and the folds are there and it's pretty much all cleaned up. And there's some, uh, I'm not sure what the bulbs are, but the bulbs are ginormous.
Oh.
Bulbs are probably eight inches across and fourteen inches tall.
Wow.
They're huge.
Yeah.
So, uh, Mr. Delvanary said he will dispose of those properly.
Okay.
And that's where I am. That's what we got.
Um, the highway committee did have a meeting a week ago. If we got anything we should go over.
We didn't really discuss. We had the committee meeting to discuss the water line for the uh, bank there on Coral, or Corvera. And, uh, we essentially, we want to look into it, but you know, there's, it's going to probably take a year or two years before we get everything into motion to be able to put something out to bid. So it's a long-term.
It is.
So long-term project that we're going to be looking into. It will definitely help loop because of the line that comes up the, um, uh, Keehan, I guess now is dead ended. And then the line that comes across to Adele Stanley from the city through that backstreet is dead ended as well. So if we can get those, they'll be looped, which is the preferred ways to have those water lines looped anyway. And it will help tie all those on. Do you, you end up figuring out where the Sunoco station?
Uh, they said that they would get on if, if it wasn't some exorbitant price, but they, they did say that they would.
Okay.
They're interested in the, I know the, well, it was a, it was a bank and it was a tobacco shop and now it's, the dispensary, it's closed. But when they were trying to open the dispensary, I know that they were interested in getting on municipal water. But the only way they could do it was to bore Route Seven and hook up to the sixteen on the other side of the street.
Okay.
And no.
Yeah.
But so if, if, you know, I'm not sure who, what somebody owns that and somebody's running, uh, whatever, but there was interest at one time in them hooking up. So they probably would too. The guy that owns the building on the corner that burned, he's definitely, he owns that and the bank, um, uh, Green Mountain Credit Union. And he would put both those on. So that would pretty much take care of that side. And we could drop a hydrant or two in there, put, put, um, you know, substantial amount of fire on that side.
Yeah. Good. Nice part about hi- having hydrants on the both sides of Route Seven is you, you don't necessarily have to close the road.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, we, when the fire, we had the fire down there. We had to close the road for the entire time we were there because we were bringing water across from the hydrant on the other side of the road. Or initially you want to close the road. So you don't have to deal with the headache, but you, if you were able to have hydrants on that side, you could break down, move over.
You could at least have one lane each direction.
Get traffic moving while you clean things up and whatnot. So something to look into. And then, uh, for moving in a forward direction with the sewer line project down there. So we're working on a permit package for Vtrans.
Robert Clark called me yesterday. He was really hoping to have the uh, bid package and the permit package to us before the meeting and we did not get it, but it is going to be ready any minute. Perfect.
Good.
I like to hear. And then we were discussing the Green Mountain Plaza traffic study, which didn't come back in our favor. So we kind of wanted to maybe talk to the planning commission as to why it didn't come back in our favor. Because we really think that having two left turn lanes would benefit the plaza astronomically, but we're wondering why this traffic study doesn't say that.
Two lanes exiting?
Two left turn lanes coming out of a plaza.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
The traffic site says that it's not gonna, there's not enough traffic to justify that.
Well, obviously they have been driven down through there.
Well, that's what we say. Never showed up. That's why we're trying to figure out when they did the study because you go down there on Sunday and man, that place is a zoo. So if they were doing it, you know, on a Tuesday at noon, you know, noon to three on Tuesday, then maybe.
But not even then, they're not even then, Kurt, because, uh, I mean, uh, my husband and I were going down through and, and I said, it, it's like the fair is here.
Well, it's always.
But it's like back in the day when the fair, you'd be lined up, up Gaudier Hills. So.
Um, it's the, what, August is about the peak travel time and it's the thirtieth highest hour is what they designed for, from my recollection of the old days. Um, and it, you know, the, the, the line coming out, there's already two lanes. Um, for the, those two lines coming out, if we got them. So it's no skin off the nose of the state.
The, the only thing the state would be out is they have to hang one more traffic light.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah. And give her the island, which we would.
We could do that.
We would figure out.
Sure.
Either us or they. It'd either be between us or the, the owner of the plaza because therefore it would, that's Vtrans, that's not Vtrans problem. Get rid of the island.
Yeah.
The only thing they have to do is add the light, which doesn't seem, I mean, there's obviously a cost to that, but.
Yeah.
Some wiring.
Alrighty. So thank you. No action required on it. Do we, will we need to approve the bid package or is that just a?
Yeah, we'll probably have to have another committee meeting and look over that and.
Okay.
That'll end up coming back here.
Okay. So maybe we should aim for that. Or it's for South End Sewer. Okay. Adding, so we'll have a real short meeting tonight and then tons of stuff two weeks from now.
It's fine.
This one's going to be short?
It needs to be. I got work to do after this.
Okay. Anything else for our Town Road Commissioner? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you guys. Have a good night.
Take care.
You too. Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief. Oh, yeah. We have got a police committee meeting set, but it isn't until.
What's that?
Police committee meeting next week.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So start off with the highlights. Uh, last, I think it was, had a complaint for a suicidal subject who cut themselves in Hanford's, uh, parking lot. So myself and Officer, other Officer Dumas and Officer Blackus, two was at the station. One was out trolling around, left, uh, there to go down to assist this person who was having an emotional moment, I guess you could say. And at the intersection of, uh, Cold River Road and Route Seven, there's a red light there. Officer Dumas had his blue lights on, his siren on, wasn't driving erratic or fast, came to almost a full stop. Slowly started on the lane. There was two trucks in the curb lane. Uh, he did not see the woman coming in the center lane and she not see him coming that way. And she ran in the front of the truck and put a dent in it. So say the least. State police were called to investigate it. They did. They did a press release. Uh, that's about it at this point in time. Also, uh, we're.
First injuries, were there any?
Uh, she left in an ambulance. So elderly woman didn't have her seatbelt on. So she had some impact with her steering wheel and the airbag. Uh, I didn't hear any more after that.
Okay. Okay.
And the other thing is, uh, BSP immediately put a article in the paper. Also, I checked with Bill, Vermont, he's in the city of town. So a woman who does the estimates has been out and like she's back, but she has three things she's having to work on. Uh,
But we've notified our carrier.
Yes, me, I did it that day.
Okay.
I got this bill. He gave me the website and I filled out all the proper paperwork and filled it out as best I could. So they would know that. We're there.
Um, vehicle damage is the truck out of commission?
Until we get someone to look at it, I, we're not going to drive it. It looks like, it goes down the road straight, but it's got a kind of a bent up fender. But we do have side lights on it, flashing blue lights. So they were put on there for that purpose, coming to intersections that the people would be able to see us. And he had sirens going, everything we're supposed to, where he did it. Actions happened.
And he's okay?
Yes, he's fine. Yes.
Did see a news source picked it up, wrote an article on it and put it right on City Cruiser. I'm like, yes. Like, yes.
Perfect. We had another, uh. Injury is, uh. Nothing had too serious, but had filed first report injury on, uh, training accident with a canine. So, not the canine, the officer, you lose any time, but we. We just did what we had to do.
You work with dogs long enough.
Yeah, you're gonna get. Right, so.
Spider flesh damage. Just a flesh wound.
Just a nibble.
Is that why Rooster got a? Art collar?
Wasn't Rooster.
Oh, it wasn't Rooster. Oh, okay. All right. So he's off the book. No demotion.
Correct.
Okay.
The, uh, Saturday went well, I thought, too.
Yes.
A lot of questions, a lot of com- comments.
We have a good picture of this little boy was eating a chocolate coated doughnut. And he had it all over his face, so I got Dell to take a picture of it.
Oh, really?
Because it was like, it was so cute.
Might have been related to me, maybe.
Oh, I don't know. Might have been. He was a cute little bugger and he, and.
Except for his mother.
I can confirm the cops had plenty of leftover doughnuts. Right next, right next to the coffee machine. I saw Ed come running in with them, stash them away.
I took good care of them. Mary and I made sure they.
Bundling up and half dozen packages and handing them out.
Our cops did not go without donuts this week.
Which we appreciate.
All right, well, thank you for your, your work on that.
Yes, they were in the.
Firefighters don't eat donuts.
Oh, I beg to differ. Can I have more than one? Sure.
All right, any questions for our police department? As I said, we do have a, a meeting coming up next week, so.
As far as, uh, act fifty, I looked over that, only, I think he's right, it's gonna be a benefit to us, maybe just. What are they gonna have for barricades for, uh? To stop vehicles going up there.
Okay.
And, uh, to properly seal the whatever buildings they leave there so that people can't go in.
Okay.
That'd be my, the only two concerns I have.
All right, and you'll have a chance to make those comments, I think.
I will.
If, if there's not a space on the questionnaire, you can do an addendum, just make sure. And what I would be looking for too is that. The obligation to patrol and police the area is not borne by us, it's borne by the, the old. Um, condition and the permit remains. I want to make sure that's there.
I was gonna ask you about that.
Yeah, I want to make sure it's still there. But I don't know, I haven't read the thing yet. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anything? No? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Marsha Chaffey, head lister.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Marsha.
I think the main item, um, for us tonight is the, um, extension letter. We are hoping not to have to use the extension, but just to be, um, cautious. Uh, we are gonna send it to P, PVNR so that Jill Remick will, will approve it. Uh, we're. Pretty close, we've still got a couple of, um, site visits that have to be done. Um, and, uh, hopefully those will, I think those are gonna be finished up this week. Um, we've had.
Okay, this is item number one in your packet. It is, uh. Grand list extension request. Um, it is directed to, uh, property valuation and review and it is. Uh, to be requested or to be signed by the select board or the chairman of the select board. So is there a motion?
To, uh, prove and authorize Mary to sign it.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Um, discussion or Marsha, anything more we should know about this before we vote on it?
No, not really, just that, um, like I said, we're hoping not to, you know, not to use. An extension for the thirty days, maybe, you know, four or five days beyond that June fourth deadline, but. That would be it.
Okay. Okay.
So.
Uh, any further discussion from the board? If not, all in favor of approving the grand list extension request with me to sign, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries for zero. Okay.
Okay, um. We are working away at Business Personal Property. As you know, this is our first year doing it and, uh, Kathy has been absolutely amazing at, um. You know, inputting the information. We have a stack of the. Larger, uh, companies like Home Depot, Staples, Hanafords, I mean, these are. Thirty, forty pages of equipment that we have to. You know, match up with what we have in our system with what they have declared. So it's taking us a little bit of time, not, not ever having done it before, but, uh, we're working through it. Um, right now, it looks like, um, Business Personal Property is. Going to see a significant increase. Um, one of them, of course, being GE. Hopefully, um, you know, we've, um. We've looked at the, looked at the numbers and we will definitely go over those numbers once again to make sure that we've captured. Everything that they're declaring. Um, let me see, it was something. No, other than that, we're, you know, we're proceeding and, uh, hope to get the grand list lodged. Uh, mid-June with, um, grievance hearings, uh, towards the end of June. So that, um, you know, we can. Set the tax rate earlier this year.
Okay, any questions for Marsha?
Oh, uh, one more thing, Mary. Um, bids on the reappraisal are due. This Thursday, May twenty-second. So, hopefully, I haven't received any. Any phone calls regarding, uh, any of the documents that we have sent, so. I'm hoping that what we've sent to all of the approved appraisal firms. That we covered every area that needed to be covered and they're comfortable with, you know, proceeding with giving us a bid.
Yeah, how many were there that you asked for bids from?
Fifteen that are the state approved appraisal firms.
Okay, good.
Yep.
All right, so we'll wait until next meeting and find out where we are with those.
Hopefully, hopefully.
Yeah.
We're still being told that, uh, you know, twenty thirty is the earliest date. So.
Yeah.
But, we'll see.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Marsha. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Marsha.
Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, like Mary and Ed said, I think the open house went very well, um, thank everybody for coming. Heard all compliments. I did get one complaint and I talked to Mary about it, about our missing flagpole. I told the individual it'd be. Put up as soon as it could. We do have plans on getting one. Um, with that being said, I was thinking about it and. I was hoping to get my members to agree, which we'll find out at our June meeting, but. Would it be okay if the fire department out of their own fund? Donates the flagpole for Kurt to put up, like he volunteered to do. So we can get a, like a, like one in Center Rutland.
Kurt's indicating yes.
It's fine, me.
Yeah.
Perfect. You'll put it up still?
Yep.
Alrighty.
Sure will.
I will keep you posted on that.
Okay.
Um. Nothing else except for, uh, our meeting tonight that Kurt was gonna talk about.
Yeah. Kurt, so I think I'm, I'm up to four things.
I got delegated to talk about it, yeah. Let's see, well. Might as well start by spending money, right? That's what you usually say. So. Um, the fire department's looking at a new brush fire skid, um.
A what?
It's a, they call it a brush fire skid, so it's a water tank with a pump and hose reel. That goes in the back of the pickup, turns a pickup truck into a brush truck. Um, the one the department has right now is. I don't know, probably twenty years old at least and it fits in a Ford Ranger. Which is the Ford Ranger that Mike has, so it doesn't carry enough water. And it doesn't really fit in a full-size pickup like they have now. It's, you know, this big and slides around the back. Um, so they got a price on a new skid, it's forty weeks out. Um, so kinda wanted to get this on order now, so hopefully it'll be here for next year's brush fire season. Um. It's. Twelve thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. And that money would come out of the depreciation account of the fire department, so that's set to replace equipment.
Which the depreciation account has six hundred and eighty-five thousand in it so far, so.
Can that whole one be sold to a department that still needs one for a small truck or is that just get junked or was that?
I, um, there might be a department maybe that wants to, you know, put together a brush truck that might go out and like. I mean, it's, it's custom-built for a Ford Ranger. Um, so there might be a department out there that might actually go out and find a Ford Ranger to take it, but they'll. Be something that's gonna have to get figured out in the.
It's changed in twenty years too.
Yeah, and.
I make the motion that we buy the piece of equipment. And, um, I mean, it's a safety issue too. It's quicker to start, stop a fire, assuming than just your hoses.
Well, it's, yeah, it allows the, the pickup can get places the engines can't.
Okay.
So if you have a fire in a field, you can get the pickup out to the backside of the field and.
Okay.
Second it.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the purchase of a. Um, it's a hundred and fifty gallon, um. Container of water hose and pump to fight brush fires. Um, I've heard stories about a certain farmer down on Creek Road who had a. Fire get away from him and, um, there was a need for just such piece of equipment. So. Um, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries for zero and that money will come out of the, uh, fire equipment depreciation fund.
Okay, so the next thing to spend money on. So, when the department upgraded air packs. Um. MSA changed from one style pack to a new style, so they had to change all the air bottles, all the air packs. Air bottles are only good for fifteen years, if I remember right, Chris?
Yes.
Uh, so they're, you know, to not have to buy fifty-two bottles in a lump sum again. Want to start buying, the fire department wants to start buying five bottles at a time. Um, that would again come out of depreciation account for this year and the bottles. Uh, five balls is seven thousand fourteen dollars? Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Uh, just generally speaking, depreciation funds and, and plans for future needs, you got them all covered, are we good?
We did ask, I think the next. Large piece of equipment would be a fire truck and that's several years out.
About ten years down the road.
Yeah, so.
So I move that we purchase the bottles because it looks like we're gonna have to have them. And the better way to do it is in smaller increments, so it doesn't. Pardon, but burn.
Yeah.
Burn through.
Yeah, they're fourteen hundred dollars a piece.
God.
Which is kinda disgusting, but. Whatever.
That's, motion's made, is there a second?
A second.
Motion's made and seconded for the purchase of five, um, air pack bottles. Um, total cost of seven thousand fourteen dollars from the fire depreciation fund. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries for zero. Okay.
And the other thing we were discussing was. The budget and what we would have for carryover funds. Um, it was, looks like we're probably gonna have about thirty-two thousand dollars in surplus to carry over. And we just wanted to start putting the bug in the ear, um, to move towards Cascade system. Which is eighty-seven thousand dollars, but we have, uh, thirteen thousand five hundred raised in funds from fundraiser. So, uh, we'll have pretty close to half of the Cascade funded with the carryover.
So your, whether the rules in your carryover.
That's gonna get swept to the capital improvement, so.
We could throw it out of there later.
Yeah, so you can either earmark it or you just pulled out capital improvement afterwards, which is.
It's, we need an update on the bid from, for the Cascade system, so we don't have a proposal tonight. Cause we need that upgraded, but we should next week and we wanted you thinking about, is it okay to dedicate? Any excess funds toward. Um, this Cascade system rather than letting it be swept into the capital account. Frankly, it's. You know, one or the other, it's probably not much different.
Yeah, that means have to decide, I'm pretty gonna decide.
Yeah. Yeah, it's coming from the same places.
Yeah. So.
So that was just a.
Is anyone opposed to the idea?
That, that decision would be made in context of what our capital improvement fund ends up being.
Well, yes.
We have on the table.
Yes, okay.
It looks like. Well, we can kind of butt it. Well, it looks like we're gonna have two hundred and ninety thousand in excess options money.
Yeah.
Doesn't necessarily.
The last quarter in, so we're in good shape.
We're not sure where we're gonna be at in our other budgets quite yet, but.
And, yeah.
We're gonna have, we're gonna be putting some money into the capital improvement.
Which we, because we don't have much left.
No.
Yeah, right.
And the cat, the cascade's the last big purchase to get done and.
Yeah.
Hopefully we can not spend some money after that.
Probably better. Ask all the department heads what else.
Yes.
They had in mind that we forgot what's coming up.
Yep.
Try to make a plan.
Yeah, so anyone, um, department committees, just check in with that. I mean, we did this with fire, we just sat down and asked. You know, you're, you're spending over on this, is this the last expenditure you're spending under? And how much more, so do that with your department, you'll get kind of an idea of what might be. Left over and what they have in mind, because some do some last-minute purchases and it would be good to know in advance. Um.
Oh, and then there was one last thing, I guess.
Well, actually, I can think of two more, but you go.
Yeah. Um.
You two are going in timeout.
Yeah. Not for this, but for many, many other things, yeah.
So, the, uh, right now the department's capped out at ten out-of-town members. Um, which considers Walton City or Walton City and Mendon. Um. Chris has been getting a good amount of applications from city residents. That wanna join the department and very slim pickings from, you know, town residents. So, he wants to move in the fire department, membership as of all voted. From ten to fifteen out-of-town members. It's not ideal, but we need members, so. Obviously, it'd be great if we could have a department of, you know, fifty town residents, but.
Right.
It's not the way things are swinging right now. So they would like to move ten to fifteen members, which has to get voted on by.
I make the motion that we let them move from ten to, to fifteen, um, out of town. Firemen.
Second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to increase the number of firefighters on the town. Volunteer, um, department from ten to fifteen. Um, any just further discussion? I was, I, I asked Kurt, because he's in Clarendon Fire Department. Um, how they do it and they do it with a percentage, which I think would be harder to track.
Yeah, it's a percentage of the total number. Yeah, it's a percentage of the total number of members on the roster at that time, so it. It can swing back and forth, but.
This is what we got right now.
What's that?
How many members?
Um, so, right now, we have. Twenty-eight or thirty members in the fire department, and we allow eight out of town. Town, the town residents, uh.
Total, do we have?
Chris, what's your total roster right now?
Uh, we have thirty-one on the roster.
Yep.
But they don't all show for the fires.
Yeah, yeah, you always have a roster and then you have more active members than some others.
So. Motion's been made to increase the out-of-town complement from ten to fifteen, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries for zero.
There you go, Chris.
Thank you.
Yeah, did we have a new firefighter to approve, or was that?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we do, I, the application I handed to Sharon when I was leaving, I forgot to leave it on the desk for you, but.
I handed to you, I handed it to Mary.
All right, somewhere in my stack.
Sixteen-year-old, uh, town resident, his name's Earl. Uh, we met him last Wednesday, he came up, seems like.
Here he is.
And he, Ed did the background check today, so I think we should be good with your approval.
Okay, so this is, um, Earl Saunders. And he is applying to be a junior firefighter from age sixteen to eighteen. Uh, he is up on Post Road. And. Oh, that's real, this is an interesting application, anyway, um, motions made, seconded?
Yep.
Do you second? Any further discussion? And do we all get to sign, or?
Yes, you all sign it, please.
Okay, down the bottom. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries for zero.
And I think that was it, unless I forgot something.
Um, you'll be quiet over there.
He's doing real well.
I want it to be it. Is there anything else, Chris, I missed?
I believe that's it.
That covers it, yeah. Uh, of twenty twenty-five, okay, coming your way. Anything else for our fire chief? Well, thanks again for the very good turnout of firefighters who are at the open house and for the. Nifty display table with all of the goodies for kids to take home. Um, the helmets as usual were a big hit.
And the pitcher, the pitcher books were outstanding.
Those were great, yeah.
I even found my eighteen-year-old grandson in there when he was four.
Oh.
Really?
Yep. Yeah, it was, um, I think it was celebrating the town and so they had a thing up by the chapel. And the fire trucks, the firemen let him hold the hose.
Oh.
Oh my god, he was giggling and you could see on his face.
Okay, anything further for Chris? If not, thank you very much, Chief, appreciate it, oh. By the way, um, one of the reasons we met with, and this will, this will be a time-consuming project. The fire committee is, um, going to begin reviewing. The policies that the fire department is putting together, they had had bylaws. They had policies as well, they're gonna sort of move away from bylaws and go through the, go to a policy system where they can. Um, more readily adopt and make changes, so there's much. Work being done on that, um, among the firefighters, so we'll have more on that, but it. Was a hundred and fifty pages, so we didn't think we wanted to. Kind of like the personnel handbook thing, um. All right, thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
Next up is Carrie Clark, town clerk and treasurer.
Hello.
Hi, Carrie.
Hi, Carrie. So, let's see, I put, um, the last installment for the local option tax money. I put that on each of your desks, that's what Kurt was referring to earlier. Our fourth, uh, quarter installment came in at. Three hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-three cents. And that brings our total to, uh, one million five hundred ninety thousand. Six hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-six cents. And, um, we budgeted this year as an anticipation of one point three million. So we came in over anticipation, uh, by two hundred and ninety thousand. Six hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-six cents. So that's what Kurt was referring to, um, so.
Yeah, Kurt, Kurt stole your thunder.
Yeah, I kinda ruined it for you.
Really sorry, Carrie.
No, 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 that's okay, I, I just wanted it on record.
Really good news, thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I, um, try to bring good news. Uh, let's see, the next thing that I had, um. Our tax installments, um, we got about ninety-five percent of our third. Installment, and honestly, that's a, I know it sounds great, but it's a little on the low side since I've been here.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
We're usually more like ninety-seven, ninety-eight, um, so that is. Questionable, as far as like, I'm wondering what's going on, um, so I guess. This is my public service announcement to anybody that's listening after this is recorded. Um, if you have forgotten to pay your third installment taxes, um. Give us a call and we can do some calculations and see what you owe. I know there's several of you out there, so, um, it's kind of unusual. So that was my service announcement. Uh, I will be giving, uh, Don Toffee, the delinquent tax collector, uh, warning, um. In a, I'm going to say. He gets it fifteen days after the due date, so that is roughly, uh, next week. Probably on Tuesday, so it'll then be up to him to collect that amount of money. Uh, for the town. Let's see, so I gave you the local option, I gave you the taxes, um. That's really all I had for updates, I know that we had a. Finance committee and slash personnel committee meeting last week. Um, I don't know if you wanted to summarize that, but I know in our agenda. It's, um, going over the audit policy that we talked to Andrew. About during our committee meeting, so I don't know if you wanted to do that now or wait, or. How, how you want it to proceed.
This would be a good time while you're on, because you were involved in this. Um, you may recall that we had put a draft, or Bill had found a draft policy. Um, for accounting auditing and financial reporting. Um, and we kept putting it on the agenda, but with a note that we needed to talk with our auditor basically after tax season was over. Well, tax season is over and, um, Andrew. Was able to come in and have a meeting with us and made a couple of suggestions for changes. On the, um, policy, um, one was to add language. Anticipating that we might need to do single audit. Um, single audits from time to time, if we have in excess of. Um, well, it'll soon be one million dollars in federal funding. Um, we had to do one when we got the ARPA funds, because we were over the seven hundred fifty threshold at that time. And there were a couple of other places where we, um, tweak this, but basically what you. See is pretty much the template with some changes to make it more significant to us. Um, so Matt, anything you'd like to add to this?
Nope.
Would you like to make a motion?
Adopt the accounting, auditing and financial reporting policy. Stated.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to adopt the policy, is there any further discussion or questions about it? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Original in the folder, it's better to use.
This one's pretty, but, all right. Okay.
And we already also, oh, sorry.
No, I'm gonna start circulating, so. Two pages.
So also on your table, Mary, um, Andrew handed me the letter that we sign every year. For, to get the audit started.
Yes.
And, uh, since he was with us, he just decided to get that going.
Um, and so actually, that's, it's an envelope and quite a packet, it outlines what AMPIECH proposes to do. For us, I'm gonna skim and find what the cost might be. And this would be. Of, of course, they have to wait until the year concludes, and then they start working in the fall, and we get the audit report in. Late fall and in time to do, um, budgeting and then. Oh, here it is. Our gross fee including expenses is estimated to be nineteen thousand dollars, and then there's more explanation. But that's. We have an audit each year. Um, what, would, would you, I mean, you're certainly welcome to read through this and see if you have any questions, there are. Two places to sign, and I never can figure out whether. I think we sign under governance and somebody else signs under management, right?
I checked, um, before I gave that to you, and it looks like last year my signature was the top. Section and your signature was underneath.
Okay, your management, I'm governance.
Sounds about right.
All right, is there a motion?
Will do approve.
Motion.
An authorized chair.
Oh, okay, thank you, motion's been made to approve the, um, proposed audit. Numbers and proposal from AMPIECH, um, and me to sign, motions made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed?
I'm your life away like always.
You know, it makes me feel so uncomfortable, but. There you have it. Motion carries for zero. All right, and I'm gonna put this back in the envelope and Carrie, leave it with the. Um, orders, bills and warrants so that you can sign it and get it back to AMPIECH.
Sounds good.
Okay. And sign this one, and, um. I'm going to give Bill the accounting, auditing and financial report policy we just passed. Um, because there is a place for the town treasurer to sign, so he'll have that in the green folder.
Okay.
All right, anything else from the finance committee meeting, trying to remember? Or anything else from Carrie?
It was, um, it was more of, uh, a discussion in our committee just about many little things. Um, so there wasn't anything really needed to come forth in front of the select board yet. Um, just kind of some ideas for moving forward into next fiscal year that I had, so.
Yep. Okay. Any questions or comments? For Carrie? I, I will say, Carrie, I, I did mention at the open house. Um, we had Bond Counsel down to tour the facility, I don't think Bond Counsel usually gets invited to do things like that. But I, I, Bob Fletcher, I mentioned. Um, the work you and he both put into getting our application into the bond bank and what a very good interest rate we got. So thanks to you and Bob for the work you did on the bond application.
Oh, no problem, the building's beautiful.
It is, it is. Okay, um, if, I think that's it, so thank you very much, Carrie, and we'll move on to. Mike Delahanty, is he on?
Uh, he was coming in.
Okay.
No Mike, no Joe and no JP.
No Joe, no JP, they were all up at the open house. Um, Barbara Pulling, Town Planning Commission Chair.
Yes, morning, evening, good evening. Uh, we, the, the Town Planning Commission hasn't looked at the Act two fifty, uh, permit yet. Um, and we don't meet until after your next meeting, but it's, it's that same week, our next meeting is the twenty-ninth. So we'll take it up then. Um, and maybe have Mr. Grasik, uh, come and, and speak to us as well.
Good.
Yeah, um, let's see, uh, thanks to Bill, I think the city might be on board. With that MS four outreach and education and public participation work. Um, we just need to figure out, um, the costs. Um, I, I think I mentioned before that, uh, my time can be covered by some of my other water quality work. At the Regional Planning Commission, um, but there would be some, um, expenses. Uh, especially if you want to have like displays, or, you know, at like the town-wide celebration. Um, and.
Yes, we do.
Okay, okay, I hear you loud and clear, um, and, uh, if we wanna do some, some mailings. Uh, I'll, I'll work with Andres on getting some numbers. That email from the city just came late this afternoon, I think, Bill, right?
Yes, it was, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it sounds promising, um, I, I need to find out also how many households. Were, um, working with in the city in that Moon Brick watershed, so. Hmm, that will be a factor. And, you know, maybe it's not gonna be a fifty-fifty cost split between the town and the city because of that.
Oh, yeah, the city has a lot of residents on that Moon Brook watershed. A lot.
Yeah, and then, um.
Probably, probably three, four hundred, I would assume.
Oh, okay. So we'll have to factor that in. Um, the Pocket Park, the Planning Commission, the Town Planning Commission. Did come up with phase one activities for that. And they are, uh, clearing brush, thinning trees, removing dead trees. Number two, removing invasive plants and replacing with native species for birds and wildlife. Number three, expanding the parking lot on Simon's Avenue. Number four, adding safety alert signs for flooding and combined sewer overflow events. And the last one is removing or covering, there's, uh, at least two. Um, pipe ends that are no longer used, um, that should be covered, and there may be some wiring, some. Straneous wiring left on the property too.
Okay.
So that's what we've proposed for phase one, we would like to meet with, with Mike Rowe and Dave Sears. Um, probably waiting until Mike becomes full-time, so starting those meetings in July.
Okay.
On those.
Could you count me in? Could you count me in meetings too, please?
Yeah.
I, I have some ideas for volunteers who may wanna help with that.
Oh, great.
Actually, people have approached me on it, so.
I've gotten some calls too.
Good.
Great, it, it'll be in the next circle too, another little, uh, request for volunteers. Um, and there's one thing the planning commission did not talk about. Um, I didn't have it on the list when we met a couple of weeks ago, and that concerns the historical. And archaeological resources at the site. Mary, I, I think you were party to some of those meetings. Mary, I think you were party to some of those meetings. Um, where in the relicensing process that Green Mountain Power went through. Um, they they committed thems- themselves and I guess the site to continue to work with um, VDHP, which is the Historic Preservation Office for the state Vermont Division Historic Preservation. The Abenacination and the Stockbridge Munsee Mohicans. Um, yeah, there, there was this uh, commitment to consult with them as the designs for the park were being finalized. So that there would be minimal impacts to cultural resources. And there's another part which wouldn't fall in, in Phase One, but that's where they would also be involved in some of the signage. That would go in there in the messaging and in the signage. So we'll just have to keep that in mind before, probably before we do any of this work in Phase One. Um, especially, you know, the tree removal and that sort of stuff that we would need, need to fold those groups in.
Well, I, I agree and we do want to consult with them because they have the historic knowledge. Um, and so do other groups as well, the Crown Point Road Association and others. Um, but as far as clearing and something as simple as clearing invasives, I don't think we need to consult. Um, maybe some of the tree trimming. Um, probably not so much. I think those folks were involved if we were actually going to be excavating and I don't hear that anything you're doing in phase, proposing for Phase One is excavation, so.
Yeah, I guess the term that, you know, that they're concerned about is any ground disturbance. So maybe the parking lot might, um.
Uh, to, to the extent it hasn't been already compromised a whole lot, yeah.
Right, right. Um, but yeah, I don't really know about, you know, pulling trees out and things like that, whether they would consider that ground disturbance.
Um, I don't think so. I think they mean like digging and agricultural, you know, harrowing and plowing and so on, but.
Yeah. Okay.
But I, I certainly want to keep those groups in the loop because we want them for the signage that we eventually come up with to explain the significance of the area. Going back, you know, several thousand years. It's a pretty cool place.
Yeah. It really is. So do you want that to all, all happen through the planning commission or is, is, are we venturing into your rec depart, your rec committee?
Well, let's have that meeting with Mike and with Dave and with me and the planning commission.
I want to be included.
Sure, yeah. Um, and we'll warrant it because, because of the players, we'll have to warrant it as a public meeting. And um, and then we can start talking about just getting in there and doing some of the things that we're able to do with volunteers and with the town resources that we have.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like it needs its own subcommittee.
Very possibly.
Pocket Park Committee.
We might just come up with one. Okay.
Did you just volunteer yourself, Kurt?
I did not, no.
Yeah.
My plate is quite full at the moment.
And I have to be nice because he just finished doing a lovely job down on my farm, so I'm very grateful.
Yeah, there's a lot more, a lot more U's out there that need to show up.
So, um, that's, that's good. I'm glad the planning commission is, came up with that great list. That's kind of what I was hoping they would do. And um, let's have a meeting among the folks that you mentioned and maybe even come back to the select board with the proposal for a Pocket Park Committee to move this along. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, uh, that's all I have this evening.
Okay. Um. I, I keep asking different groups of people to react to this. You may recall, um, a meeting or two ago, we got a request from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission to re- um, revise, revive the Rutland Airport Committee and to send a person as the town's representative to it. Um, and I'm wondering if, I mean, they've, they've provided the meeting agenda for the first meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, May 27th. Um, there's Airport Committee Bylaw Approval. Goal one, link between the airport and the region. Goal two, legislative priority list and site visit. Number three, hangar development updates and Vtrans policy meeting. Number four, other state airport committee coordination. Five, airport updates. So I don't know whether I mean, I know the planning commission usually puts information concerning the airport in the town plan when you revi- when you revive it. Um, I'm not sure who we should be looking for to serve as the town's liaison. Um, Kurt advises that the firefighting down there is done by the city of Rutland. And of course, the um other services are provided. I think sewers provided by the city.
Sounds like a great job for a legislator.
A legislator?
Somebody who's interested in regional issues and how the state is involved in those.
Possibly, but we need somebody to do this, I think. I mean, if anyone's interested, if we want to keep a hand in, although I suspect we're fairly minor players because other municipalities um, have more input.
Do you think the new representative to the Regional Planning Commission Board would be interested?
Oh, Jim Marsh?
Yeah, Jim Marsh.
Um.
There'd be some time, you know.
Yeah. Because he was, you know, in Killington and, you know, did work at the ski area and I don't know. We can ask. I'm wondering, is there anyone that you know of on the planning commission who might, the town planning commission? Who might be interested?
Not right offhand. No one.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, many of us still work. Um, not all of us.
Yeah, yeah. That's right, this uh, meeting is on a Tuesday at eleven AM.
Yeah.
Yeah, they always do that with those airport meetings.
Yes. That's right when I have my New Lawyer Incubator project rounds every Tuesday. So. Okay, well, think about it. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Anything further for Barbara? No, if not, thank you very much, Barbara.
Okay, see you later.
Enjoy the evening.
Bye bye.
Okay, Larry Delvanary was on earlier for the transfer station, but yeah, and he was here for the fire committee meeting as well. Alright, Bill Sweet, Town Administrator. Hi.
Alright. Through most everything, so we're in pretty good shape. Uh, we, in addition to needing um, the Airport Committee Representative, we received a letter, which is in your packet number two, from the Rutland Free Library. Uh, one of our representatives resigned effective immediately. Uh, and they are now seeking a appointment from the town or recommendation from the town for a new appointee.
Um, I do have someone. Now, if you read the rest of the letter, there was a request, we hope you come up with somebody who's a good fundraiser and they tend to do this. They tend to tell us what they're looking for and hope we will come up with that perfect person from the town. I tend to say, we're going to send someone that we think would be good, you know, so. Um, in this case, and I've sounded out this person, Fern Fryer is um involved in, or has been involved in adult education, um, quite, quite a bit, Community College of Vermont and also I think up at Stafford. Um, she is a spouse of Dana Peterson, who's on the planning commission. Um, she's very active in Boy Scouts and is Assistant Troop Leader and has been for many years. She had my kids in it. Um, very interested in education, you know, obviously, working both with scouts and with adult education. And she's interested in serving. So I would propose Fern Fryer.
Second.
Okay, I can't make a motion, so I'll treat that as a motion.
I'll make.
Motion's made and seconded.
Somebody get it.
To send Fern Fryer's name as our um, suggestion for the Library Board of Trustees. Any further discussion? Anybody else got any other names?
Do you normally post this one?
No, because it's really it's a weird, it's their board and they're required to get input from us, but we don't make the appointment. I think that's the difference.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of Fern Fryer's name going to the Board of Trustees? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
Right.
Okay.
Along, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, the last thing in your packet is the reply from Vtrans for the Root for Speed Study. Uh, and they're adding it to their agenda on, in September of this year. Yep. So, um they're gonna do a study and then add it to the agenda, but they'll let us know ahead of time, so.
Yeah.
This is gonna have the same expedient responses, the other things we've done with, so it's just gonna take some time, but they're, they're, they're on it. Uh, we'll see how that goes.
Joe is kind of our point person on this.
Oh, yeah, he's got, he does have a copy of that as well, yep.
Okay.
Uh, and then on your desk, you have a few things. Uh, you have um, a memorandum, which just, we just got from Andres and a copy of an email from Velco. Uh, we were a bit surprised to get the response from Velco when we went to them for permission to use uh, their right of way for our stormwater project and they essentially said no. Um. This is not been consistent with what's been done in the past. Uh, it does present a bit of a problem for the projects and does kind of throw off our plan. Uh, Andres did say, you know, if we have anybody that's available to maybe talk to them, having relationships that we should try and reach out. But if they don't agree, then we can't move forward with our project, so. Um. Yeah.
I know they changed a lot of their grounding requirements over the past year, which is part of the reason why they shut us down.
What do you mean?
So they're the High Line poles emit a certain amount of static electrician, static electricity. So they're going around the entire state with meters essentially, and these structures are all emitting too much stack electricity, so they're having to run ground wires down the structures and essentially grounding in a web around these structures with multiple ground rods up to two hundred feet away, tying it all in in order to get that stack electricity down. Also covers it some more for lightning strikes and whatnot.
So. So, I mean, if we don't do these projects, somehow that we don't.
Well, it, 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 there's some comply, we can run into some compliance issues with our MS4 permits and that's, that's what he kind of, you know, identifies in here is that we were moving forward under the assumption this was going to happen and
meeting with uh Andres and somebody from the state perhaps with them, if there's some alternative, like if we can tweak it in some way.
So he, he, he does talk a little about alternatives in here, but I think it probably would be worth, I mean, this, this just came through yesterday. I mean, this, we, it was four days for them to say no from the time we sent it to them, to them saying no, so it was quick.
The state's gonna have the most influence here.
Uh, would you like me to invite Andres to a future meeting to talk about the impact and?
Well, it won't. I mean, I think Kurt's pretty much summarized. We can kind of understand, but
Right, I mean.
I think what, I think Matt's on to something, but we should ask Andres to reach out to the state and see whether they can talk with Velco because this is pretty important and Velco is all over the place.
Yeah, that's a dead end and we need to know what's next.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the state should know anyway because they need to know we're trying and look at the roadblock we hit.
Absolutely. Okay, I will, I'll talk to them about that.
Okay.
Uh, we received a proposal to purchase some town-owned land. That's included in there also.
Um.
Which properties is, they gotta do side.
This is the twenty-four acres usually, we, yes, it is. I'm sorry, not twenty-four, I was wrong.
It's a parcel that's
Mm-hmm.
Has no real accessibility. Uh, it's, it's behind a parcel on Route Seven North.
Um. In the past, we have done potential land transactions in executive session?
Want to discuss it next meeting with the full board? Man, we're not a huge rush on this.
Good idea. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
I heard, put it out to bed again, is that what happened last time?
There's a warning that has to go out, a notice that has to go out.
If we are at the point of wanting to accept it, I think we needed that approval.
Did that before.
Yep. Okay, so Bill, if you can put this on the.
Absolutely. Uh. There is a, well, I'm sorry, was there anything for that? Good. Okay, that'll be on the next agenda, yep. Uh, we have a sewer allocation application from Tractor Supply. They are one of the ones that was non-responsive. They are now, so we're back on board. Uh, they've decided to take the, let's go. They're gonna jump ahead and not, not have to worry about a little, as I talked to the guy, he's like, yeah. So they're, they're just going.
We're rounding up here by several flushes a day.
Fine, but they, but they, but they're expanding their, they, you know, their garden center's been getting busier, so they're planning on using more water, so it's, it's, that's fine, so. We have plenty of allocation available. Uh, we did receive the funds, we have a check, we have the checks for that, so.
What's your pleasure?
Move.
Motion's been made to approve the sewer allocation increase for Tractor Supply. Motion's been seconded. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Take care of that. And then the last thing is your uh, on the desk is your scholarship award summary.
Alright.
Matt, I gave you copies of the letters there. So I'm the one that has this. Yes, which behind me, terms of its.
If we approve the secrets. List.
The award of scholarships, right.
Secret list.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um, discussion without disclosing. It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, folks?
Yeah, I, I have to say Matt did the bulk of this work because I was too close to, this is kids that are at my house, some of them, so. Um, he really did a good job on it and I agree with everything that he did, but he, he did do his homework on it and I appreciated that.
Yeah, good, thanks. Alright, if there's no discussion, all in favor of approving these scholarship recipients, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. And.
So now these, you wanna
I'll.
collect those separate.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
One more secret was separate, yeah.
So it was, um, Mike Rowe usually likes to know.
Yes, because he uses those kids, yeah, yeah. So I'll take one and, and give it to Mike. And he's good about that, you know.
Right, uh, though. There is one on Joe's desk, yes.
Top secret.
Yep.
Uh, I did let Rutland High School know that at least one of you would be there. Matt said he was going to go anyway, so you're welcome to go as well, at least one of you there, so like to be a part of that. I don't know when it is yet, but exactly, but it's, it's going to come soon. It's eleventh?
I just know, my daughter has to be there.
What's the date of Rutland?
That's, I, I, she didn't, she didn't say, but.
Okay.
I assume it's going to be next couple of weeks, so.
Yeah, senior awards night's uh, it's eleven.
It is, okay.
So graduation is on the twelfth.
Yes, it's also.
That's the graduation night?
Graduation's the twelfth, awards night is the eleventh.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
All right, uh, the last thing I have is we got from VLCT our uh grant award letter today. Uh, and they are awarding us up to, up to five thousand dollars. So uh, I will work and get as much as we can for, for that, uh, so it's, they're going, they're, they are going to give us. Uh, the approval for the highway uh monitoring system again, but they said, okay, but no more. But I, 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 I gave justification and there was, there's actual data to show that like they're driving safely and it's doing well, so it was. It was worthwhile, but they are, we are still the only one to have asked for this, but if this shows well and they still shows. Historical trends of good driving, they may actually open this up for, for everybody, so it's, it's an interesting thing.
Yeah.
Um, there was one thing we got declined, we, they, they, they declined to fund, uh, so we put in a replacement item, so we got, we got a little more, so. We're, uh, we're, I, I want to get as much as I can for this, but we did get the award for that. I've let um some of the departments know already. Uh, so we can try and get stuff done because we can.
Good, thanks.
We've been, we've been, that's been a wonderful grant. We have, we have got a lot of stuff for that over the years, so.
Good.
Very good. That is everything that I have.
Okay, um, so I was going, anything for Bill while he's sitting? I did leftover from a meeting ago. We got Vermont Council on Rural Development, their Community Leadership Summit, which is free. And what day is it? You, please reply by June fourteenth to nominate a local leader. And I've asked if anyone was interested. Um, and you get to go to this Community Leadership Summit on August eleventh at Vermont State University in Randolph. Hmm, Kurt, aren't you a graduate of that institution?
Oh, yes, he is.
He is.
Yeah.
I graduated from Vermont Technical College, alright. I had to go change everything up.
Um, any interest in that? We still have a little time, but I'm not sensing there's a whole lot of enthusiasm for going, but. No?
Tight on time.
Okay, well, there's your opportunity.
Those January, maybe, but this time of year is go time.
Yeah, all right. All right, action items. Um, we've done the scholarships, we've done the grand list extension, we've done the auditing, accounting and financial policy. Uh, the draft alarm, alarm ordinance, we should be getting feedback from the police department. Uh, when we meet with them next week, so that's sort of underway. Any other new items that we haven't talked about?
One new item tonight we have to talk about. Are you ready for it?
Yes.
Are you?
I don't know.
It's, it's a motion.
Oh, wait, 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 I mean, um. Update on committee meetings, we went through personnel and finance, highway and fire, update on the Select Board project list, there it is. A board to meet an executive session, I don't have any reason to. Kurt, what's on your mind?
I think uh, we're probably getting the emotion uh to adjourn.
Motion's made and seconded.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.